Order and if we could raise or stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the solid courage of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to make the introductions of the people sitting up here at the table. I'm going to start on my far left. Kathy is our secretary, sitting in the corner. Eileen Velitis, one of the board members, T.J. Anderson, our treasurer, Bernard Shaw, our vice president. I'm Nancy Zabrowski, I'm the board president. To my right is Dan Velit, the board's attorney. And Dan is from the law firm of Beulah Better. To his right is Quinn Brunet, one of our board members, and Stephanie Richter, next to him, our other board member. And next to Stephanie is Doug Johnson, our business manager, and Dr. Lowell Holtz, our superintendent. Our board clerk, Suzette Larson, is not in attendance tonight, and so I have asked Mr. Shaw, as vice president, to step into those duties for this evening. The purpose of the board hearing and the role is, the annual budget hearing is prescribed by state statute, that's why we're here. And as required by state statutes, the budget hearing portion of the annual meeting identifies revenues, identifies expenditures, and presents the summary of revenues and expenditures in the format required by statute. That format is called the Wisconsin Uniform Financial Reporting Requirement. The uniformed system of accounting allows for consistent accumulation and presentation of financial information to aid understanding and decision-making. The budget hearing is the opportunity for the electors to provide comment on the proposed budget. The budget has been developed over many months with input gathered from staff and the community. The budget is an expression in financial terms of the programs and services of the school district and the proposed means of financing them. Copies of the 2012-13 budget adoptions are found in the annual meeting book, pages four through seven. And I believe the annual meeting booklets are on the table, if you haven't picked one up. Administration will provide an overview of the budget. Afterwards, the board and community are invited to comment and ask questions. So, Mr. Johnson will provide an overview of our local budget at this time.
The required notice of the annual meeting and budget hearing were published according to statute. There is a booklet there that contains the recommended format for adopting budget. And I just got a few slides coming through for everybody to see where we get our money from, how we spend it, and then how the tax levy is calculated. Most of our revenue comes from two sources, state aids, which are funded by income, sales taxes primarily, and local property taxes. This pie chart illustrates that. As you can see, between taxes and state aid, we're off to almost eighty percent of our revenue. We have some year fund transfers, revenue that comes from other districts and foreign tuition. We don't get very much federal aid here, not in a lot of different federal programs. But all together, that gives up the sources of revenue for the school district. We spend most of our money, being by percentage, on employee salaries and benefits and purchase services such as utilities, people transportation, tuition payments to other districts, contracting for building equipment. There are a couple of conventions that we have to keep track of, revenues and expenditures in for the state reporting purposes. The first of which is funds. You'll hear us talk mostly about the general funds during the year. That's almost eighty percent of our expenditure. The general fund supports most of the educational programs, building, maintenance, transportation, and that sort of thing. The special projects fund, the red pieces that tie there, really reflects the expenditures of our special education program. So, when we throw those, that together with the general fund, you can see that over ninety percent of our expenditures by funds are made for programs that are directly related to student learning. The other way that I'm showing this is objects. Objects are the things that we spend money on, such as salaries and benefits, purchase services. And after that, much smaller pieces come, you know, for insurance, debt payments, equipment, things like that. The budget for this year that we adopted, as you can see, is in six different funds this year. Each one has a specific purpose. As I showed before, the general fund and special projects make up the greatest. Total of that comes to a little over thirty million dollars. The year fund transfer subtraction is something we have to do to make sure we're not double compounding. When we reach the end of the fiscal year, the general fund requires to transfer money to the special projects fund. If that fund is not allowed to have the fund balance or to have a negative expenditure, so we subtract out that two and a half million dollars, which is the estimated transfer this year, give us a net total expenditure of almost twenty million dollars. If you happen to remember last year, the all-funds budget was much higher than this. Two main reasons are that we had the major field work done here at the high school, and in addition, we used a part of the district's fund balance to pay off almost all of the district debt. And again, both of those occurred last year, so the funding has been served over this year without those. Calculating the tax levy, we only need a levy in three funds, general debt service and community services fund. Total of that is about twenty-three point eight million dollars right in column. From that, from the expenditures, we subtract non-tax revenue that's state and federal aid, tuition payments from other districts, fees that we collect. The largest chunk of it is state equalization aid. We subtract that out, we come to a required levy of almost fifteen point one million dollars. We include it in this budget, little less than two percent reserve or contingency if we have to hire more staffing during the year and have unproceeded expenditures. That brings a total recommended levy for this year, fifteen million, five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars change, an estimated mill rate at this time of nine dollars and forty-six cents. I need to point out that there's a number of factors that we don't know yet at this point, and will not know until October, when the state tells us what our equalization aid is going to be. We'll find out what the change in the equalized valuation of the district is. It's likely that that mill rate is going to change. Our board is committed to a levy of fifteen point five million. The chapters should be exactly what last year's levy was. So, to sum up, I guess the proposed levy would have funded the deck of budget to buy a small contingency amount and result in no increase in two thousand eleven, twelve levy. I'd also like to point out that, under the revenue limit formula, if the district was axing to the maximum allowable, this recommended levy would be eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars higher than it is, or develop an obligation to capture the speed on behalf of the board. But I think if we were to have an obligation at this time, you'd have a budget with no levy increase. For those who are interested in doing math on their own property, you take the tax levy, fifteen point five million dollars, you buy and buy, and this is your last year's property value. Again, we don't have to remember yet. If you divide by the one point six billion, you get a mill rate of nine dollars and forty-six cents. Divide your property value by a thousand, and multiply that times the mill rate, that would give you your school taxes for the year. For example, your property's value is two hundred thousand dollars. You divide by a thousand, it gives you two hundred times nine dollars and forty-six cents. Your school taxes for this year would be one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. The next thing I add comes later in the meeting, which would be the motion that would be necessary to disallow that tax. Under your question, for the board.
How do you formulate the reserve?
Actually...
Contingency, I mean, excuse me.
Yes. When the board indicated that it wanted, over by right column, fifteen point five million, there was no increase. We said, talked about whether it would actually increase. And we decided that the way that we budgeted really left no room for any cost overruns or revenue shortfall. So, I guess there's nothing real magic, other than to say, we knew we needed something, and in order to come out to a zero tax increase, that was a dollar amount.
Thank you.
What's happening to the age and things like that?
We, in our projections that we use, because we have to do them so early, we assume that enrollment is going to be flat. Last Friday was the official count date for, there's twice a year we have to take a membership count, second or third Friday in September, second Friday in January. And I know the ladies that do the work, we're still crunching the numbers today. So, I can't tell you exactly where we stand in the voting party. We're hoping that it's at least flat, if it's not going up. We did go up last year. So, hoping that it continues to. We can't really control it.
So, Mr. Johnson covered both E and F on the agenda. And you'll note that on page eight and nine of your annual meeting documents, there are some other forms that show some information as well. Does anyone have any questions? All right, hearing no questions, then I would ask for a motion from the board to approve the budget as presented. T.J., is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget as presented. Is there any other discussion? And then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the budget has been approved. Moving on to letter I, the purpose of the meeting and the powers of the electors. The annual meeting vests certain duties and powers with the electors in the school district. Among those duties and powers are to set the annual salaries of the board members, authorize the payment of expenses for school board members, designate school sites, vote a tax for the capital expansion fund, authorize the sale or long-term rental of school buildings or property, direct the school board to furnish school lunches to students and appropriate funds for that purpose, authorize the school board to acquire real estate by purchase or condemnation, approve a trust fund loan from the state, and other powers of the annual meeting are listed on chapter one twenty of the state statutes. At this time, we can elect a chairperson for the annual meeting. So, are there any nominations for chairperson for the annual meeting?
I'll nominate Nancy Zabrowski as chairperson for the annual meeting.
Are there any other nominations for chairperson? All right, do you have to vote on that? Okay, so all in favor of Nancy Zabrowski is chairperson, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All right.
You can stay here. You recognize your role is different because it's not a board meeting, the annual meeting, but this one.
So, if you'd like to stay seated, you can do that. If you want to sit in the audience, you could do that as well. Letter K, reading an approval of the 2011 budget hearing and annual board meeting minutes. Mr. Shaw is taking over as the board clerk for tonight, so that would be you, Bernie.
Thanks, Nancy. First of all, there was a school board election held on April 3rd of this year. The results are, we have two new board members, Eileen Velitis, she received one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight votes, and Quentin Brunet, who received one thousand five hundred and fifteen votes. We'll draw your attention to the, for approval of the minutes of the annual meeting. Those minutes are located on pages ten through twelve of your handout. Would like to ask for a motion to accept the minutes as typed. If you want me to read the entire minutes, I'd be glad to do so.
All right, Mr. Coloff?
Second.
Made a motion to approve, and Mr. Anderson seconded the motion. All right, any other discussion on the minutes? All right, then all in favor of approving the minutes from the 2011 annual board meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. And L, the clerk's report.
The clerk's report, I mentioned the election that was held. Contained in your packet is a representation of unaudited information related to various funds that the school district has from our last fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2012. I do draw attention, in fact, these are unaudited. And so, other than that, that's the only one to go with the court. Now, if you accept, it's presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Thank you. Bernie? Letter M, treasurer's report. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Page fourteen of your annual report booklet is a compilation of the overall funds available, our cash, petty cash investments, and our liabilities. As of June 30th, we emphasize what Mr. Shaw had said, these are unaudited. I will point out just a few things. Last year went through a major defeasance. The district began with eight million, six hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand in debt, and ended the year with four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in debt. The four hundred and forty-five thousand we paid over the next nine years, it was a zero interest debt we received from the federal government. So, it made no sense that the fees at this time, because there's no interest with the, with this, the defeasance itself saved us approximately eight hundred thousand dollars years under a tax levy maximum. So, it is a huge benefit to our district. With that, I'll present the treasurer's report.
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Second. Any questions, any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the evidence reports.
This has been quite a busy year at the Whitnall School District. Much of the year was spent on the stormwater and facilities project for the high school. This project originally started with a high school parent group, and a committee was formed from there. I would like to thank the primary committee members, Carl Stavi, Marty Ordinance, Russ Lipkowski, Pauline Hurst, and Dean Erickson, and of course, everyone else who had a part in that committee. These primary people visited other schools' facilities, they really did a work, a lot of work on coming up with their vision on how the facilities would best be presented. And now we have athletic facilities to be proud of at Whitnall. We have an improved baseball field, new tennis courts, girls softball field, soccer field, a beautiful football stadium, and best of all, a track that our kids can actually run on and hold track meets at their own school. So, that's something definitely to be proud of. And of course, let's not forget the stormwater issue. Hopefully, now we will never see a puddle of water standing in front of the gym entrance, or ice in front of the gym entrance. So, I'd like to give a special thanks to Matt Karshna, our facilities supervisor, who put his all into this project while continuing to do a great job with his regular duties. He was kind of the project manager and really spent a lot of time doing this. The Falcon Field opening was a success despite the rain. And after the rain, we came a beautiful rainbow. And we had a tailgate party, ribbon cutting ceremony, we had a video from Barry Alvarez. The football team won their game, that was good, and we had fantastic fireworks. So, thanks to all who participated in this event. The district held another very successful block party in September, and I'd like to thank committee members Mike Seaver, Quinn Brunet, Cheryl Baker, and their host of volunteers. And a good time was had by all who attended. We were able to bring some new revenue into the district this year by partnering with Clear Channel Outdoor for our new electronic billboard. And they were very gracious the night of the field opening for running only Whitnall ads on the electronic billboard that you did. So, that was really fun to see. We've also experienced some changes in the district office this year. Tom Vogel, our HR and special ed director, left the district after a number of years to pursue another opportunity. We were very fortunate to be able to hire Dennis Joyce as our new director of pupil services and special education. Joel Green was moved into the HR position on a part-time basis. And Tony Brzeowski moved from the high school principal position into a curriculum position into the district office. Also Joan Kimmel, the superintendent and board secretary, retired after a number of years in the district, and we welcomed Kathy into our district. So, along with these new members, we have an outstanding team in the district office. Also this year, the board voted to add collaborative release time into the calendar for the 2012-13 school year. After some changes to the original proposal regarding early release and late start time, we had a very successful first session. This is something that the teachers and principals have been asking for, and we're convinced that this will be an excellent approach for the district, to be able to continue to work on aligning curriculum within each grade and among different grade levels. The board also recently approved the new district technology plan, which will put more computers and other electronic devices in the hands of all of our children. The educational experience at Whitnall just keeps getting better and better. Thanks to all of our wonderful students, teachers, support staff, and our administrators for making Whitnall a great place to be. And now we can move on to the superintendent's report, and hopefully you have different things to say than what I did.
Well, I can kind of, that's a nice segue, because Nancy said how our academics and achievement have kept going up. achievement have kept going up and up, and part of the reason is, is because when I started here, the focus of the board was to raise the bar and to increase academic achievement. So everything we've done over the past several years has strategically been put into place so that we'd be in a position to, to have an increase in academic achievement. Just this past year, we had, one of our elementary schools had 100% of their kids proficient and advanced in not only reading, but reading and math, which is almost unheard of across the state. So we've been successful in, in that way. We've increased AP offerings, we've increased our graduation rate, we had the best ACT scores in our district in known history, which goes back 17 years. So there, there's been a lot of good things moving forward. All of this is in preparation for the state, which is now going to start raising the bar as well, which is a wonderful thing, because we need to have our kids not competing just locally for jobs, but on a national and a global level. So our focus is really on raising the bar locally, but the focus is on competing globally as well. So we've, we're heading in that direction, we're doing well, we're making solid gains, and I'm just, I'm not going to read my report, because it actually is on the table there, and for those who are at home, it's on the front page of the website, right underneath, I think it's the first one under the announcements. But the last paragraph kind of sums up what I've gathered from the board and the district, that we need to continue our commitment to not only our children, but also our taxpayers, which I wanted to point out at this annual meeting. A commitment that says we provide a quality educational environment while operating as fiscally efficient as possible. As educational leaders and taxpayers, we need to get the best return on our very important investment, and as your school district administrator, I will be committed to providing a quality education for our children while continuing to be fiscally responsible to our community, and I can only do that because that's, because of the support of the board and the focus of the board. So it's a great team, it's a great district to be in. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Letter P. It is time to set the time for next year's annual report, annual meeting, excuse me. The state statutes states that the annual meeting is held on the 4th Monday in July, which is July 22 of 2013, to begin at 8:00 PM. Is the board or administration interested in changing the time to immediately following the 6:30 PM budget hearing, or changing the date to September after the audit? The 4th Monday in September is September 23, 2013.
I'd like to make a motion to move the date to 9/23/2013. I will second that.
All right. Mr. Shaw made a motion. Mr. Anderson seconded it. Any discussion on that?
The only thing I will say Nancy is, we as a district have been keeping this consistent for the last several years. Prior to this, we did our annual meeting just before the, just after our, we did it in July, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Coloff? This has kept us a little more consistent, as we know a little bit more information as we move into the budgetary process. I've heard other school districts talk about changing our dates based on Packer schedules. I'm sorry, it's, that's what I've heard. And unfortunately, it does happen on, on a Monday night once in a while. It is not our intent to make it a Packer Monday that we have our annual meeting, it just happens to be that we are due to 4th Thursday, our first, 4th Monday in, in September. So I think it's, if we stay consistent, I think our community will be best served.
Any other comments on that? All right, we have a motion and a second to hold the 2013 annual meeting on Monday, September 23rd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have new business. We will need a motion to levy a school tax for the ensuing year.
What would the tax levy as presented, between specific numbers, the general fund of $151,000, $47,000, $76,000, debt service fund of $55,000, insurance fund of $42,000, $21,000 for both, $5,000 for the tax levy, $15,000 for the power, $42,000 for the 25, 000.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Coloff. Mr. Coloff made a motion, and Mr. Anderson seconded. Any discussion, or is there anything else you wanted to show, Doug? Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of approving that, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. The levies are subject to change resulting from the 3rd Friday of September count, but I think that, we'll know that soon. Letter R on the agenda is the motion to set board salaries and compensation for expenses. Is there a motion to set board salaries and compensation for expenses? The current salary, our board president is $3,400 annually, and the other board members are $3,200 annually.
We can say what was last year.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Coloff, this is Richter. Any discussion on that?
I would like to add a little discussion to that. I'm not opposed to that, but if we look around, and we look at, do this every year, we look around other school districts, we're trying to be competitive. I have one more you left on the board, it doesn't bother me what we make, because I don't do this for myself. To be competitive, other school districts, minimum are 4,200 to 5,500 in the surrounding school districts for the school board salaries. This is not a job you do for pay, it is just, what you ask for is to cover your expenses, your personal expenses for gas and everything else, any complications you may have. So I'm going to vote no to Mr. Koloff's motion. I'd like to present a motion after that, if it passes.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to, we have the school board salaries remain the same as they currently are. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
And letter S on the agenda, motion to adjourn.
For move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sure there's no one opposed. At 7:05, when the Packer game starts at 7:30.
7:20.
Let's do 20.
But we've been technical.
Let the minutes reflect that.
Yeah, let the minutes reflect that.
So we are going to move right into... Okay, we're going to move right into our regular school board meeting, which is our, our business meeting, and I'm going to call the meeting to order and verify that everyone received the meeting notice and adopt the agenda. Normally at this time, we pledge the flag, but we've already done that, so we're going to go right on to number two, comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. Does anyone have anything? All right. Number three, consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight, we have A, approval of curriculum leadership roles and titles, B, approval of student teacher placements, C, approval of trip to France, spring break 2012, I think that should be 2013, approval of September 10, 2012 school board meeting minutes, and E, approval of September vouchers and vouchers payable. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
A. I want to remove C through this one.
All right. Anyone else? All right, would someone like to make a motion to approve B, D, and E? TJ, is there a second?
Second.
Bernie? We have a motion and a second to approve B, D, and E on the consent agenda. Any, any, anybody? Sorry, I lost my train of thought. All those in favor of approving those, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Quinn, A.
Can you tell, can someone tell me what leadership roles and titles we're approving?
Yep. Just the, on the bottom of the cover sheet, it's confirming the title as executive director of academic achievement, and I kind of pointed out that your superintendent didn't catch the switch on the sheet that went in your packet when you made the official approval. All along, I, you know, in all the diagrams you've used, I've used the executive director, and I apologize for that, I should have got it, but I didn't. So I, just to confirm, because it was passed as curriculum director Nancy, or something like that.
Director of curriculum.
Yeah. That we confirm that what the board had approved back last year as to what that role is, and then I, the expanded part of that role, it certainly has gone up, not down. So I was hoping we confirm that as what it had been, executive director.
So you gave us information with the executive director of academic achievement prior to us voting?
Oh yeah, yeah, it was approved, the whole, that was approved last year, the whole diagram, all that diagram stuff that was in the board packet was from last year, and, yeah.
Okay. Why did we agree on director of curriculum?
Mostly because your superintendent put the wrong title on the sheet, or I didn't catch it when it went in there, so, and...
One stops here.
Okay, thank you. That's the only, that's the only one that we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have to say, and this will come as no surprise to you, Mo, I, I don't like that title. I think that an executive director title is more in line of the head of the district, and, so I'm not in favor of changing the title, so I will be voting against her. I'm more comfortable with the director title.
Well, I also think that it was made apparently clear to me, abundantly clear to me last, at the last close session, that we vote on something and we move forward. So we voted on this, and now we're going backwards, and I was told that's not what we're doing. So I agree, I don't, I don't, I'm against this also. Not what we voted on.
I'm going to vote in favor of this, because all along it has been presented as executive director of curriculum. It was under consent agenda that we did it. Our, our mistake, as long as Dr. Holt's, for not catching it. We have gone back in clerical issues, and we voted on issues specifically relating to clerical type processes. All along it was presented as the executive director of curriculum. How we didn't catch it is all of our fault, but I'll be voting in favor of it.
That's another problem, it's, that's not the title. What you just said, executive director of curriculum, it's not, he's proposing executive director of academic achievement. We voted on director of curriculum. That's what was presented to us that night when we made the vote. There should be no reason why we're going backwards, as told me last, at the last close meeting.
But we have set a precedent in the past in going back, when we revisited collective, I mean, the, the early release and collaborative, so we have set a precedent that we have gone back and clarified things. So I will vote in favor of it. We're splitting hairs. At the end of the day, the position is the position. The responsibilities and roles are the same, the salary's the same. Why perturb potentially a very good employee when it's just the title? So roles and responsibilities aren't any different. We can argue and discuss process and procedure all we want, at the end of the day, it's the same position, and there's enough documentation to show originally that, that was presented in that light, and shame on all of us that we didn't kind of change that or correct that initially. So I will vote in favor of a little change. There's bigger ballots to fight than adding a word executive.
Anyone else opposed?
Motion to approve curriculum leadership roles and titles.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the change in the curriculum leadership role, title. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
I think that was afforded to vote?
Yes.
So it passed. And Steve, Bernie?
I pull this out primarily because I want to make sure that all the parents and students that participated in this trip, and I'm totally in favor, and I'm great, that they really thoroughly read the waiver and the release of claims. Very important section of this agreement, and so that they understand the liability rests solely in their family and not with the school district, the school board, or any member thereof. So very important, if this company that is hired goes out of business and there's large deposits that are made, the school district is not responsible to refund any personal items. So I, for any of those students that sign up for this, I mean, it's got to be very transparent on what they're like in the years, these are the, it's good business. That's another problem.
Other than that?
Motion to approve the trip to France, spring break 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on that? And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm going to switch numbers four and five, just for this evening. So I'm going to do board member announcements first. Anyone have any announcements?
I have one. Even though this is a little sparsely attended, we do have a special guest in our audience this evening, but he stepped away from his post at the moment. We have a boy scout in our audience who is working on a badge and was invited to attend this particular meeting specifically so that he could see his government at work on a local level. So Mr. Gabe Satchka, thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. Good luck on getting the badge. And may you have continued success in your scouting program, maybe we'll see you up here in a couple of years for an Eagle Scout project. Thanks.
Do you have to write a report or something on this?
And if I remember correctly, there's an interview involved as well, so.
Maybe you could share that with us when you get done. Any other announcements?
I do. Yesterday was the first annual Falcon Open golf outing held at the Skegel Lakes. I was a participant along with several people in this room. I will have to, I'm making this announcement just so, huge success. The numbers came roughly through today, it was like $7,800 in profits they made off this golf outing with 79 people golfing in it. I want to take just a minute and recognize a few people that were actually there and really did put this event together, it was, it was amazing. Rick Ellison was the lead, then we had Laura Saletti, Nancy Sarno, and I apologize, Peggy, so, thank you, Peggy Sobieck, Craig Austin, Gene Kraus, Rob Krill, Jackie Winters, Jessica... I, I can't, Dorin Berger.
Dorin Berger.
Thank you. Lucy Dietrichson, Kathy Wagner, Kathy Chapa, Lynn Mendon, Maddie Smith, Mike Wilson, Jeff Wallack, Lowell Sue Holtz were there to put this together. Just an absolute success, a little chilly of a day, and I was lucky I was with Mr. Shaw, Mr. Koloff, and my son Clayton, we missed it by three strokes, darn it! But it was just a fabulous event, a lot of hard work. I just wanted to say thank you, hooters out to all of you guys for the effort... I just wanted to say thank you, goodness out to all of you guys for the effort that you put forward, you deserve the minimums of thank you for this.
I agree, great event, well done.
Anything else?
I have one announcement. I received an email late yesterday that Suzette has resigned from the board effective immediately, so as she was our board clerk, we will need to appoint a new board clerk, and we can take care of that at the next meeting, and also we need to look at how we're going to fill the position until April, and that would be an appointed position where we publicly advertise for this opening, people apply for this, they go through an interview process, and then the board votes on someone to take that spot until April, and then they would need to go through the election process in April. Suzette's term was up at the end of March, and so she would have been going off the board at that time, I believe, so she just is going off earlier, so. That's my one announcement. And now I'm going back to number four, comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration.
I'd like to have a next agenda that we appoint an interim clerk.
Just put that, will be on the agenda. Anything else? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
For move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Well done. Well done.